Soon we'll talk to you all in closed session about matters related to the STVCA issue.
Do you need one of us to take, help you take notes?
No. First item are comments from the public up here.
I was just gonna say, comments.
Agenda item two, general administrative and financial management. Two A, your financial management plan, implementation of that. That's an ongoing matter, really, to be brought up on the do step one of setting our tax rate, which we're not doing today, but you talked about at your last meeting. We do have agenda item two C that relates to doing that step one, that's here. Mostly it's just kind of a safety valve in case it actually comes up. The agenda item two B, this is the last month of your fiscal year. So you are required to adopt a budget, an operating budget, however you can amend it at any time. In connection with that, the board asked Michelle of Forbes to go ahead and come up with a budget. And I'll turn it over to her, there is a copy on the SharePoint site and part copies as well.
Okay, so hopefully you've all had a chance to kind of review it before now. We reached out to all of your consultants to try and get estimates from them and input on what they thought that the next year amount should be. I think everything, I think we got feedback from almost everyone. But this is what we've come up with. If you have any suggestions or items that you want to, I know you have some notes.
She saw my notes. They're very many. Couple of my, pretty minor things. You've got payroll tax. In the past, we budgeted for director fees at $36,000, included the payroll taxes.
Yeah, so.
But that's not a big issue, it's like $3,000.
Yeah, so coming from auditor background, your payroll taxes are supposed to be recorded separately from your director's fees. And that amount, $36,000, I took five directors times the annual maximum. And that's where I came up with that, so.
That's good. Well, we used to, I'm not criticizing anything I say about the format, because I know you didn't have a lot to deal with. But we used to get in the past, and I'm sure you've seen the same format, is you'd see last year's budget or current budget, current year-to-date, projected year-to-date, that's what we want to pull form up. So then we could compare all of those issues. And then also you'd see a comment column which showed basis for it, like as you just said. But I'm not criticizing you.
Yeah, so I understand what you're saying. And we, on a monthly basis, we will compare it like that. This is just for adoption of the.
When I adopt a budget, I know what we spent so far this year. It helps, or when I perform this especially. But that's fine. I think Michael may have a question or comment about the touchstone and the website hosting. So I'll let him do that. And I know this format is the way we set it for in terms of the constructor. But probably it would be, make more sense to take the operator fees per Jeff Perry, which is really part of the levee drainage, move it down with levee drainage. And that would be consistent with what we do with the reuse water. So the one, two, three, fifth line down, said operator fees. That's really levee drainage, so I think that should be down below under levee drainage. That's all.
Okay.
Just moving it.
Okay.
And only just consistent, and the top will just be.
So those operator fees are only related to the levee and drainage and not the reuse?
Right, from Jeff Perry, right. There's another operator fees from Maryout to the reuse water plant thing.
Uh huh, yeah, okay.
All right.
I can leave that now. That'll be easy.
I said, I've only got my comments. And I don't know what the $7,000 is for public outreach. It's been there for a while, we've never spent it.
We've spent some of it, haven't we, for public outreach?
So that's public outreach that your general manager does, not our.
Oh, that's not yours, okay.
That's general management where anything like legal has to do public interfaces. That's a separate.
So, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, please.
I'm finished.
I was just gonna say, I think that, you know, for tonight, we have to adopt a budget. And there's gonna be a definite learning curve, I think, for all of us, trying to work through the best way to see things. And I know you're gonna bring, you bring a wealth of knowledge with your audit background that we'll be able to maybe make some corrections here and there about things that we've been doing one way in the past and another way. I know I, for one, am open to any of those suggestions. I'm not, you know, married to the way that we have looked at the budget in the past. But I do like the idea of being able to see the, you know, where we are year-to-date. But for today, I think it looks, basically, we've got. The numbers really look good.
And I have no problem with that, adopting this as it is. The only problem I had is trying to generate year-to-date off of the last budget report. Texas, we didn't have this set up the same way, so you couldn't figure out what was what. You may know, we couldn't.
Well, I think that, and for me, I was just sort of taking everything with a grain of salt, because I know that you were kind of rushed to get all this done. And I, my thought is that over the next few months, that we'll kind of iron out some of those details about where we want to see things. And Michelle will make some suggestions about how we might want to look at things. Because ultimately, we just want to make sure that we're spending the money wisely and that we're making sure that we're following the rules of any kind of funds that are encumbered by, we can only use it for this, or, you know, restricted. So, so thank you for putting it together so quickly. I really appreciate that. And I think that as long as you're open to us, you know, all working together to come to an agreement on how we want to see it, I think that that would be fine.
And I have no trouble with adopting it as it is, recognizing.
No, and those were all really good.
The other, the other question I have, and Jeff's up here, is there's a very large increases in Jeff's the Paris Management, Mullen, and so forth.
Well, remember, we've just increased the, the, okay.
We've got like 100% increase on average, so.
Yeah.
We'll have to ask them about the basis for it, just understand the basis for it.
Right, absolutely.
We've been so many adopted as it is from now.
Okay. How are you feeling?
I have, not from a format standpoint, but I have some of the same questions that Jerry did, certainly with LMS.
Okay.
I mean, I know we talked about it some, so whenever Jeff's here, we've talked about it, about it some more. But I mean, versus everything else, that's probably the biggest jump that's in there.
Absolutely.
And, yeah, maybe for, for Bill with the North Levy. Put some more in there for that, for this next year. So, I mean, I think we know what that's generally about, but I think it merits some discussion.
Yeah, I agree.
And then I think, like I said, you know, going forward to the next couple of meetings or whatever, we can kind of push, put this up against year-to-date for 2022 and see how that, you know, if it makes sense. Because just looking at this, this document, okay, well, it looks pretty good. But how does that, how does that line up with everything else? So I think we need to do that, but I'm fine with adopting it.
I know for me, I want to go back actually to 2020 and 2021, because there was a completely different format that we had our budget in. And that is what I was accustomed to seeing. And then it changed, you know, a couple of times since then. So to get my brain wrapped around it, I may need to look at that just to kind of figure out where the apples and apples are. But I think that it sounds like we're, Nate, Jerry and I are in agreement for tonight.
Need a motion? Yeah, I would just say the only thing is, Michelle, as you get up to speed and as you can, provide that other column that we're talking about.
Yeah.
I know much of that will be flushed out in the audit, but we probably won't see that audit until Decemberish.
Yeah.
November, December, January. So from a planning and just knowing where the money went and how it was spent against the budget, that would be very helpful, so.
Yeah, speaking of the audit, your fiscal year is coming up. We haven't heard from Tom about the records that we're missing.
I don't know if we're gonna get them. Oh, you mean the bookkeeping records.
Oh, yeah.
I misunderstood.
We did get the email about, so they were gonna, there were some physical records that they were gonna have delivered to your office. Did those make it? And then the electronic ones that you had asked for, did they send those?
So, no, what we're missing at this point is general ledger detail for everything since. So we did an eight, agreed upon procedure from the last fiscal year to March 31st. We're missing everything from April 1st to present.
To today.
Yeah, so that's all general ledger invoices, invoices, bills, everything. We don't have that. We don't have any checks. So in order for us to prepare a bookkeeping report at your next meeting, pay the bills, get ready for audit, so everything that we did in the AUP, we're gonna have to kind of do again for the bookkeeping records, because we want to make sure everything's recorded in the right place. So the first step is getting what they recorded, and getting the support for all that. And then, you know, making our spreadsheet, comparing it to Phil's information, and making adjustments. But as of right now, it's.
I think that, and to be clear, for the record, for anyone who can hear me, I was referring to your AUP undertaking. I don't know that you're gonna get too much more from that. But on the electronic general ledger, I think it was Friday late, Tom replied to an email from Chris. And Tom said that he had a number of people, COVID, that it was coming.
And Cindy was one of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, Cindy's out. I reached back out yesterday, but today's Monday, or Tuesday. I think I reached out yesterday to see if he could give us any kind of idea of when we would get it. I haven't heard anything. We're also having, I think we have access to Allegiance funds, but we're not able to see the account balances. And we don't have any checks from Tub.
So I got an email from Tina, and I didn't see her response this morning. I'm sorry, I was tied up on another project. But basically, Allegiance is putting the onus on Tub or one of the directors to have them added to the account, which is unusual. I don't know how much of that is because Allegiance hasn't been doing this type of accounting for very long. But I mean, any, any bank I've ever worked for has, you know, you've got a treasury management system on these types of accounts, and you can, you know, you can, you've got the owner, but then you also have people who are.
Users.
Users, and they should be able to add you. So it looks like she gave me a name of someone who I can contact over there. So I may just kind of reach out, you know, banker to banker, and say, hey, can you help me understand? This is what we're trying to do. And if I need to go over there, and, I mean, I just can't imagine that they would want us to open new accounts.
So what they want is for Forbes to open an umbrella account. And add each one of our districts as, under the umbrella, as clients. I don't know why, I haven't seen that.
That's odd, yeah.
So I don't know if there's anything you can do to get clarity. But it just, it seems like she's saying that we are users on the account, we just can't have online access.
I think it may be helpful, I think it may be helpful to schedule a time when you, or Tina, and or Tina and Cindy, and maybe myself, and whoever's needed to get on the phone, someone live at Allegiance. This has to be corrected immediately.
Yeah, agreed.
Because September 1st will be your next meeting.
Yeah.
Right, your meeting.
So I will, I'll try to reach out to the contact. And it looks like Tina sent me a copy of the last statement that you guys were able to get. So that will give me some information. And then maybe I can get some additional information from Jackie. But I think that I agree with Matt, that we can all get together and see what we need to do. And because I've always, my thought has been that, you know, we're the signers on the account.
And that's not true.
I ought to be able to walk into the bank and say, that's my account. I need to make a change to it. No, I haven't.
Because I had this issue on another district, and it took her actually physically going into the bank in order to get it resolved. I know that's extra legwork on your part, but it might be to your benefit, so you're not having to constantly call them.
Okay, we're hiring, I can go over and sort of interview their employees while I'm doing steel. No, I would never do such a thing.
So, yeah, item to yourself.
I do want to just reassure you that your 9-1 debt service payment will be taken care of, because that's on the Texaco account, and we do have access to that. So Tina is on top of that.
You have online access, you can see everything you need to see, perfect.
Yeah, so Texaco and Central Bank have been our most easiest banks to deal with. I don't know if you guys, if this continues, maybe you would want to move the Allegiance funds to Central. That's also an option. But I, I think it would be helpful to just, maybe you reach out, just to see if it's possible for them to.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with Central Bank, are they, they have.
They have public funds.
But do they have branches here, or where? Okay, I guess I'm just out of date, so.
Can you, can you email me or call me tomorrow if you want to schedule that? Hopefully this one.
Yeah, apologies for.
Yeah, no, it's not your fault.
Just want to make sure that we have what we need.
Electric feeling under my skin, I'm not gonna have access.
Yeah, I don't like it. Okay, so do we need a motion?
Yes, simply to adopt the budget as presented.
I'll second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, agenda item two D, I think we just talked about status of transition of bookkeeping services. Forbes Wealth Advisors LLC, I think we're supposed to get something back soon. We'll work it out. And then there's also the agreement for the bookkeeping services. The issues aren't insurmountable, so rest assured, I think it's fine. So that's, that's going on behind the scenes, unless you want to say anything else about it.
Would it, would it be helpful in any way to go over and ask? I mean, really, there's no way they can give us the records, they just need to email them to you, correct?
So the physical records that are still outstanding is all the rest of the 2022 stuff. So they could hand that over. And then there's usually, like for the other districts that we've transitioned from, they give us a stack of blank checks so that we can continue writing checks until our order from Harlan Clark has come in for new checks. The general ledger stuff, that stuff he's gonna have to pull from Sage, which is their accounting software. We have to manually enter that into QuickBooks.
Okay.
So I don't think that's a matter of handing it over. He needs to pull the reports.
Agenda item two B, this is your order establishing your investment policy, basically, and then appointing your investment officer. The only change to be made is, and this relates to your investments, just a quick reminder, this is for the funds over the FDIC limits. This has to be invested in approved investments that the Texas Public Funds Investment Act allows. And then your investment policy has those enumerated. I think some we take off because we just found in talking to bookkeepers, auditors, and some are Sage and others, so that's what we do. But the real key thing that we're doing tonight is changing your investment officer from Tub to Forbes. And in particular, the lady by the name of Audrey Fernston. Am I saying that correctly? At Forbes Wealth Advisors LLC, and that's the only change we're making on the LLC. But we do need to do that, because your bookkeeper and tax has or collector need that for their records. Is there a motion to, so basically.
I'll make that motion, yep.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And two A, is to engage your auditor to audit your financial statements and prepare your audit for fiscal year ending August 31st this year. The proposal is uploaded to SharePoint. You should have part copies, Alyssa, right?
Yes.
I was here last month. So we do need to engage your auditor at this meeting, unless we hold a special meeting between now and September 1st. So I'll turn it over to her, and any questions?
Thank you, Matt. So everyone should have a copy this time of the audit engagement letter. It's just your standard engagement letter. It's the same as the engagement letter you received last year. Within this letter, we outline our objectives for the audit. We also outline our responsibilities as the auditor, as well as management, i.e. the board's responsibilities. You will notice that our fees have kept in range of the prior estimate. We're estimating for your regular audit to be anywhere from $18,000 to $20,000. And then for your single audit, it's gonna be an additional $8,000. And if you'll have any other questions for me, feel free to let me know.
I have no questions, it's all pretty straightforward from what I've seen before.
Yeah, there's no severe changes from the prior year. I think even in the prior year, we had this single audit language as well.
You did.
Nate, did you have any questions on that?
Nope, looks good, I'm gonna throw it.
I don't either, great.
Okay, is there a motion to engage Paul Gibson Sweldon, based on the proposal presented?
Sir, I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
We'll just get it started.
I really appreciate it, y'all apologize for not having it in. Yes, of course, yes. And do I need to do anything?
No, I've got it.
Thank you.
Just prick your finger and blow it.
Start my life over.
Except a thing less.
And then this one's paper. I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then if, with the SharePoint thing, I know y'all come once a year for the audit, but when the audit report is prepared.
Right.
Just make a note for whoever you're doing it, or someone else, to make sure we get it up.
I already have. We have a Word document, and I already made a note. So send it a week in advance and then upload it to the SharePoint site.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. Audrey, thank you.
You too.
Agenda item three is capital improvement projects. Three A is your Brazos River Bank erosion control project. Phil is unable to be here, he may be able to come later. His childcare issues, moving back and forth, got changed, so he apologizes for that. But he does have a report that's on SharePoint. And it's, yeah, it's pretty brief, so.
I think he sent us an email that said it was just basically status quo right now. Nothing had, there were no changes.
Okay, and, oh, there's too much. Sir, are you a member of the public, or are you?
No, it's with the City of Sugarland.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
Rick Ramirez.
That's right, I'm sorry.
Government relation, Ben.
I'm used to seeing a.
Jorge, yeah, Jorge's across, giving, yeah, giving a presentation. Thank him, sorry.
Did you have anything you wanted to report on, or?
No, no, no.
Thanks for being here, Rick, we appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
B is the external drainage channel project. And Chris Skinner should be here to talk about that with you in closed session. Moving on to the new stormwater pump station project, and that's Kane.
How we doing, everybody? Good evening.
Good.
So I'm, we'll start off with the pump station. NBG is the contractor for this project. I'm sure everybody in Fort Bend County, according to the email, has seen that there was a little bit of dust out there. I think that we've rectified that situation so that in the future, correspondence are gonna go a little bit smoother. But we, we did get a report from a resident that there was dust on site, that the contractor was moving in dump trucks, that of course, we're putting down the gravel road that would extend through the center point easement, and then around the site, to the back of the site. There wasn't enough dust control for that, and we stopped work. The contractor did obtain a water truck to get out there and go ahead and spray down that site. So it's been taken care of, and we're moving forward now. On a different note, I did hear that there are people now possibly entering the site. That will need to be rectified by the contractor as well, to try to somehow make that site more secure. Put up postings, sign postings of no trespassing. We have coordinated with them on that as well. But that's a new item that developed today, and it's not shown on the report. But Bill and I both noted that, and we will get in touch with the right people and make sure that we're securing that site. No action items on, on that item. On the construction approval, pay estimates and change orders, this is for the Grant McKay and the demolition project. As noted last month, Grant McKay did submit a price for the additional Faust tract of $26,775. We do have a change order at this meeting for execution by the board. It was approved last month, but we do have the change order now, so pay for it. The proposed action item will be approved change order number two, and that amount is Grant McKay's bid. For detention and drainage facilities, again, we're, we're complete on this one. We're just kind of holding steady right now. No action items to speak of.
Is there an update for that whole Kelly property, or is that like a closed session thing? I don't think we talked about it.
It's a closed session, I haven't named yet. There's no update at this time, unless.
Nothing.
Unless there's something you want to talk about in closed session, I'm not aware of anything.
No.
For the reclaimed water project, we did receive zero bids for this project. We reached out to several contractors. We also called our, our sub on this, John Paul Dixon, who deals with a lot of these guys that implement a lot of this stuff, that everybody's too busy. It wasn't a big enough project, it wasn't on the radar. Our recommendation at this time would be shelved for a couple of months. Contact contractors again and try again. But we did reach out to contractors to try to get bids. Unfortunately, we did not receive any. So no proposed action items at this time. On the grant funding, again, we continue to coordinate with TWDB as needed. No, nothing new as far as the emergency action plan. Again, once we have the pump station complete, that's when we're gonna update that. So no action items for quite some time there. I don't believe that there's any additional discussion on the North Levy. But, okay. And the agreement with New Territory Residential Committee for the erosion efforts, I believe that there's, there's gonna be the installation starting next week on Lake Wind, next month on Satarsha, is what I understand, so.
And that's being done by the HWA.
That's correct. That is correct. No action items for the district. On review plans and improvements submitted by developers, we don't have any new plans. Haven't seen anything come our way as far as new developments within the district. Keep you apprised of what happens there. That's the report. The only action item would be approved pay estimate number, or change order number two.
Small information, Chris said he confirmed that application to the Water Board is definitely agenda for Thursday.
Yep.
And I asked if they, if they felt like one of us needed to be there, because I thought I'd make that drive if I needed to, but it sounded like that wasn't necessary, so.
If we hear anything that changes, we'll let you know.
That's great.
I think I've got to go to San Antonio for a loan closing, and so I'd be really close.
Great.
Does anybody have any questions for Kane?
Nope.
You feel comfortable approving the change order?
Yep.
So it was approved last month, but you got it, the physical one here.
I've got it, yeah. Double cover, belt and suspenders on that item.
Authorizing execution of the change order number two. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that one.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. We could swap it, and we can make Nate do the first.
Guys are out of rhythm.
Man, people are cut and paste when you.
Right, it'll be perfect. That's right.
Okay, the attorney's report. Some of the attorney's report. Five is website communication matters.
Okay, so there was a couple of things that came out of the last meeting. One of which was, I have pictures here. We talked about potentially doing another signage, and Jim went out and took pictures of the signage and kind of where it's located at, as. at as, okay, forgot. Is this the entrance there Kane where they're back towards where they're doing the construction? So that's pretty close to the construction entrance. And then, um, that's it again. So he took a picture of that and, um, we have this one here, which is that's the site, right?
Yes.
Okay. So there was potentially talked about third one.
Would you go back to the picture, the previous picture and I'll tell you what we were thinking.
This one?
That one. That's it. So to the left of, I guess, kind of on the left-hand side over there is what we were thinking. Um, simply because before you make that curve, you don't see the sign that's at the entrance to the neighborhood. But if we put something there, it would be, um, you know, for people who go, oh gosh, what's that road or what are all those trucks doing? They'd see that sign first. I don't know if it's necessary. I just know that when I drove out, I thought, what's going on? And it wasn't until we turned the corner that I saw the sign. So that's really, it's just really, what do you guys think?
I would say that I don't know if you know, another way you can move is one, God, because I mean, like when I walk down there, it's sort of like, okay, well, it's a little bit random that it's on the interest of the neighborhood. But unless you know where you're going in the neighborhood and where those houses are, then you're not gonna, you're not gonna find it. So.
That's a real good point. The only.
I think it was cheaper.
Wasn't that location negotiated with Michael?
Right. And I think it's less expensive to just get a new one and put it in than to dig that one up and move.
Probably.
I think it's, I think they cemented it in or something.
That's what it looks like.
So that's why I was, so it would be, um, worthwhile to just do another one if that.
So we can, if it's where it wants to go with that, we can have the, the third one printed and, you know, Jeff stands by it next week.
Sure.
Okay.
So that's the first thing that I had. And then, um.
Michael, would you ask him to contact me before they decide where they're gonna put it?
Yes. Um, I've reached out to Forbes to kind of figure out how all of your advisors were managed to pay for. Um, I know Pim originally set that up with Merle Cruz and those were supposed to get on auto pays, but now the banks have changed and bookkeepers have changed. I have no idea if that is being done. And I'm a little concerned that if he had that change, if he had that rebuilding at fiscal year or even a year at calendar year, we're coming up on that. And I have no financial handling of that. Um, and they don't have the records. We talked on Friday and we're a little concerned about that. Um, that ties into the fact that we were talking about adding additional credentials for, um, the auditor and maybe a spare account, um, so that we have the ability to add or remove as needed. Um, because right now all the seats that, that were originally purchased are taken. And even if I removed Tub and at Forbes, which I'm in Illinois right now, that doesn't add any seats for the auditor and I don't have the ability to pay that.
Right. And we also have the water smart.
Uh, it's about a hundred and fifty here. It's not a lot, but I don't have access to how it was originally set up.
Are you talking about the SharePoint itself?
Yes.
I understood that that had been transitioned all the way to, to.
Not that, not, we did not have anything to do with the financial side of it.
The payments.
The payments. Do you have a contact at Microsoft? You can contact and say, you need to send that to me now to then send it up there.
Potentially. I mean, Pim didn't give us like an account manager or anything like that. So.
Well, do we just need to ask him a question?
I think so. But that's what's kept me from being able to, to do a lot of this for the, the requests that were made for people to have access. Um, so that's kind of our roadblock for a moment.
All right. Well, you reach out to him and we will as well.
Okay. Perfect. And then, um, the last thing is, uh, kind of as part of just your emergency action plan, communications plans and things like that, we had discussed, or you had discussed with your previous vendor, let me say that, you had discussed with your previous vendor, the potential avenue text alert system that was specific to lid, um, because city Sugarlands text alerts, not everybody signed up for that and it doesn't always apply to lid seven and vice versa. Um, it's not a huge cost and the setup is, you know, less than a thousand and then it's a monthly ongoing. But I did know, in talking with Cindy, she was thinking that maybe we want to revisit that. Um, you know, the potential of, you know, if any storms or any other emergency actions, or if we just want to broadcast something to the greater district as a whole, um, in conjunction with other avenues that we have, like the website and the NTRCA. Um, so bringing that for discussion or we can delay that for another meeting.
Now, my thought was that during Harvey, one of the biggest issues was that there were, you know, they said, okay, evacuate lid seven. But people didn't know whether they were in lid seven or not. And so if we had our own text system, we would, you know, we could say, you are a resident of lid seven, we need to do X. It may not be something that we need to do. It may not come up again. We can, I know we've, um, Sugarland already sends a text alert out. Do you think that that would be more confusing? Do you think that it would be helpful?
A lot of avenues, right? Generally go for the, so lid seven is new territory.
Correct.
Lid seven is the same as new territory. If you're more than new territory.
That's true.
Yeah, I think my, I'm not hard and fast here, but I think my preference is just to route it through the NTRCA.
Okay.
Because they've got all, all kinds of messages that they're dealing with. Um, you know, we've got the evacuation, but I think, and then we have the website. So it's just, maybe it's just another complication.
Okay.
That we have to manage.
And for what it's worth to, Jorge, Jorge, the city just emailed me. It was about new pump station, but he's like, hey, FYI, we have our alert system. If you have a lid seven alert, we can try, you know, we'll try to help. If you want another avenue to try to get stuff out, we will gladly try to help communicate to lid seven. So.
When Harvey occurred, almost fifth year anniversary coming up this month, we were not in the city of Sugarland yet. It was in December of that year we were annexed. So now we're in the city.
We might do a, a test of the emergency broadcast system. Why not have the city send out this as a test to lid seven residents?
Can they isolate us in territory in their system?
I will, I, I, I believe so. I can confirm that with Jorge, but I, or like, I don't know if it's click a lid seven button, but it's like a geographic area.
Look up the, within new territory. They're all water customers.
For, you know, you, you do, you're the levee improvement district. You're not the emergency services district. You're not the city of Houston fire or city of Sugarland fire department. You're not the police department. You're not the, hey, the storm is coming. You're not the national weather service. If y'all want to send out a test message that says the grass isn't growing because it's not raining. I mean, I just, and that's a bit facetious. Sorry, I've been in a long meeting, but I mean, you, you, you're not everything to everybody. And I worry that for emergencies, the city, their, your residents are in the city, they should be looking to the city.
Yes, they should.
For messaging as to natural disasters, emergencies, those kinds of things.
Now, that's very true.
We don't issue evacuation orders.
Right. We would just be repeating.
And the emergency management structure would follow that same.
The EAP, I think on the website also, we refer people to the, to the city and county for that information. We don't want to, because as soon as you try to get yours out, it might be a little bit different. Like the word of different, it starts.
No, you're right. If they have questions, they're gonna start contacting us when we should be.
And we can refer. We say, if you want to do body evacuation.
For what it's worth, in other districts, you know, I have lid with that. Half, the majority of what I send out is links to, here's national weather service link, here's city of Sugarland link, like, you know.
And Chris, we appreciate your feedback, even when it's facetious.
You made that point.
No, you're fine. No, you've been working hard on our behalf all day today. We appreciate that. So, okay, I'm, I'm absolutely okay with that. So we'll just.
I might be able to answer some of those questions that we have from the city. So we do have the ability to target specific areas with our emergency alerts. Uh, and you know, if there's something that y'all want specifically to save your area or something like that, we can do that. We also do during like Harvey, for example, we take information from the county as far as like who they're gonna evacuate and that sort of thing. That's usually done by the county judge and we just help to implement it. So we have coordination for that. And we do do dry weather, uh, run-throughs, but we don't, you know, issue out of alert staff everybody. It's more of a tabletop exercise that we do for hurricane season.
We'll just warn you, but city of Sugarland, it seems the easiest. We'll have, we'll probably have an annoying concrete pour on the pump station project. It might be a good test case too. Hey, here's progress update about we were gonna be annoying this morning at five o'clock. So.
We already have the website communications item on the agenda.
Just in time.
So I think the only action item is to get that third signbook or printed and ready to go.
I'll make that motion.
I will second.
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I'm late.
That's okay.
So that brings us to agenda item six, which is closed session. And then you go into the closed session.
Yeah.
Give everybody two minutes. First person is the guy here to eventually go into closed session, sir.
Did we have an update from FEMA on the?
On the river project?
Yeah.
No, but I did, um, a couple of days ago, it's been kind of, you know, I email about once a week and I haven't got a response in a week or two. So I just picked up the phone and called our, our TDM rep left a few months ago. So I called his boss and, um, I don't have anything yet, but she was going to bug headquarters kind of thing. And I actually called back again today and went, hey, I haven't heard yet, but I'll call you back in the morning. And she's, the TDM person that's now kind of handling our stuff is like, yeah, FEMA should have approved it by now or done something. It's been a few weeks. And so she said she's talking to headquarters. She got a bug. I'm so, I, no approval yet, but I figured I'd just pick up the phone and start talking to people. So, um, as soon as I hear good news, I'll, I'll email the whole board though and let y'all know.
Thanks.
If, if I do get good news in the morning.
One update that I would like to provide, um, Enchanted Rock, we did, um, get a no objection to them. We released a check. So we should be good there. So hopefully they don't annoy you anymore. If they do, let us know.
Since the last meeting, I haven't heard from them. So whatever you're gonna keep doing.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry.
All right. Any other pre-close session updates? Is there a motion to go in the closed session? Let's call it six fifteen PM for the reason to say it on the agenda.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.